I'd like to call this meeting in the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin tonight with our invocation. This evening, we have with us Father Matthew Breville. I'm sorry, you just told me how to pronounce it. I'm afraid I messed it up. I guess I could say forgive me, Father. And you don't have a choice.
You're forgiven. It's brum leave.
Brum leave. Thank you very much for that.
I'm the pastor of St. Patrick Parish, North Kansas City. Easiest place to describe it. We're right across the street from St. Pius X High School. And I welcome the opportunity to be with you this evening. And we pray. Loving God, during this Easter season of Easter, we celebrate the gift of new life. So re-energize us to be good stewards of the tax money our residents entrust to us. As we responsibly pay our bills, consider the effects of Proposition A and conduct the other business of our meeting. Re-energize us to make Clay County a welcoming, innovative, safe, and desired destination for families, businesses, and visitors. Re-energize us to offer exceptional public services, effective partnerships, and dedicated employees so that our residents can be heard and treated with respect. Re-energize us in our integrity, collaboration, innovation, accountability, and customer service. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with thirteenth and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Next item on this evening's agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to that effect, Commissioner Johnson?
I think my mic's working.
Let me get you another shot on this thing.
Everyone else has came on. Mine didn't during... There it goes.
Okay.
All right.
There we are.
Yes, I move to approve. Tonight's agenda is written.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda are public comments. Are there any members of the public who would care to come forward and comment? If so, come up to the podium. Please make sure that the light on the microphone is green. State your name clearly in the microphone and then make whatever comment you would care to make. Is there anyone who is a member of the public who would like to come forward? Seeing none. That brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commission requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item is consideration of approving the commission meeting minutes from April the 11th. And Resolution 2024-124 is approving the payments for Clay County from April 9th to April 12th. There are 198 invoices totaling $469,836.41.
With that, is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Johnson.
I move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of the consent agenda. Let me get you back on there. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. There you are. You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next item on our agenda are reports. We have one issue for a report. Administrator?
Thank you. Yes, included in the commission's agenda packet is a report from our county auditor regarding a review of the impact of the recently changes into the surtax. And so Auditor Herbert is here to give an overview of that report.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Victor Herbert, Clay County Auditor. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I just wanted to present to you an audit on the surtax, the surtax cut effects that was adopted on the ballot in 2022. You know, during that time and the lead up to that vote, I gave fiscal notes and estimates of the impact from Proposition A and the surtax cut to our local governments and political subdivisions. And during that time, it basically indicated that not only would we do a projection estimating what the impact would be, but then also after, if it were to pass, what would be the actual impact now that it's been in place? And that was Proposition A passed in 2022. So that's really the purpose of this audit. And certainly, we can do something similar like this for some of the other initiatives of this commission and looking at the senior property tax credit and looking at the new 911 subscriber fee. So this is something I wanted to bring forward to the commission tonight. A little bit of brief background again, reminder of the surtax and also for the audience is essentially a surtax is a replacement tax that was passed by the voters of Missouri in 1982. It taxed business inventories. A replacement rate was determined at the time and placed on all commercial real estate, regardless of any ownership of business inventories. So that's essentially what the surtax is when I make comment to it today. In Clay County, there is a provision in the Missouri state constitution and state law for counties to reduce that surtax. It's never been exercised since it went into effect, except one time, and that was Clay County in 2022. The rate can't be increased, but it can be decreased. So with that, I also want to mention that at the time in 2022, basically, the fiscal note was essentially, we had an estimate from the Clay County Collector of surtax bills in 2021, which were due at the end of the year, which would make up 2022 revenues. Because taxes are due at the end of the year, they make up the next year's calendar year revenues. At that time, we had an estimate from the Collector of $17.8 million of surtax bills that were about to go out. And so looking at some averages, working with the assessor, Tracy Baldwin's office as he was just taking office, something he was very interested in looking at as well, and Presiding Commissioner Nolte and others were interested in looking at this. We basically looked at the assessed valuation increases over time. And we basically found that on average, in non-reassessment years, we would have a 2% increase. And in reassessment years, roughly an 8% increase. And what was put forward to the ballot was basically a 15 cent reduction from the old surtax rate of $1.59 per $100 assessed valuation to $1.44 per $100 assessed valuation, which is roughly a 10% decrease. So when you add up the assessed valuation increases over time, the 10% growth and the 10% reduction, at one time, the fiscal note suggested would keep those revenues at about $17.8 million, of course, with less growth, but the net impact being essentially flat. That was the fiscal note at the time. One other thing I'll briefly mention before getting into the few slides here, and please, at any point, if you want to ask questions during the presentation, go ahead and do so. I do have a time at the end as well. But surtax is unique in that all property tax, all real estate property taxes in Missouri, the property tax levy has to roll back every time assessed valuations increase so that local governments can't get more than 5%, the lesser of inflation or 5%. Surtax is exempt from that. So it's never rolled back in this entire time. It has to go to the voters to be changed. So that's a brief background and why we are here today, a couple of years later. So with that, I like to give the bottom line upfront. I like to give kind of the, you know, the main analysis and then dive into the details. And that's what this is before you. This is a review form of audit where, under auditing standards, the auditor has to have adequate and sufficient evidence in order to make a conclusion. And in doing so, I reviewed a large amount of evidence looking at from the assessor's assessed valuations, the clerk's certifications of those assessed valuations, and really a lot of collector data, monthly settlements, annual settlements. And that's how these figures are arrived at. The principal source of data is from the annual settlement. You probably saw not too long ago, the Collector provided the annual settlement of a tax year from March 1st to the end of February is how the tax year works in the state of Missouri for property taxes. And so from that, we're able to glean that of the total collections that were distributed, we see the bottom line that total property taxes have been going up the past five years from 2020 to 2024. And I should mention here, we're talking about current year revenues. So the 2024 revenues represent 2023 tax bills. But the surtax revenues did keep going up, but then they slightly decreased with the implementation of Proposition A from $19.7 million to $19.3 million. Well, I should mention, you know, here as well is that, again, these are from, you know, prior year tax bills and then, and then current year collections. This is essentially, you know, what those, what those figures make up. And also, we should point out that Proposition A, we had basically a year delay. So the vote went in place in November of 2022. That didn't affect 2022 tax bills. So the 2023 revenues were unchanged at the $1.59 per $100 assessed valuation rate. It was only the 2024 revenues where we actually saw Proposition A in effect at $1.44. So now I want to drill them a little closer into both total property taxes and then surtaxes as well. With total property taxes, we can see that there was a sizable large increase from the most recent reassessment done in 2023 affecting 2024 revenues, where essentially, we saw a 10.4% increase, $53 million on the aggregate. Something I want to mention here is that what sticks out is that, well, how to go up 10% when I just said assessed valuation can only go up, you know, the lesser of inflation or 5% total? I think there are a lot of factors to point out here, just for everyone's information, is that personal property is something that we've seen car values have gone up in recent years with COVID supply chains. And that's something that's also exempt from that Hancock Amendment calculation. New construction is fully taxed in every, any given year. So that's another factor. The amount of tax abatements is a, is another factor. So that kind of explains why collections could go above 5%. But all tax levies are certified by the state auditor for the Hancock Amendment. If you look at, you know, this past five years, basically, it's a quarter percent, you know, 26% increase, $117 million of extra property tax revenues. Some other, you know, major points I want to point out that, you know, this actual, as well, the most recent reassessment was a 14% increase, but that was actually less on a percentage basis than the 2021 reassessment, a 16%. But on a dollar amount, it was $800 million of increase in assessed valuation to $745 million of assessed valuation in the 2021 reassessment. All right, so moving on, I'll spend a little more time on the drilling into the surtax revenues category. So again, we saw a slight decrease from 2023 to 2024 revenues, about $400,000 or 2.2%. It's interesting to see what this changes in terms of total property tax revenues. It's less than 0.1% is what that $400,000 means in terms of the total $560 million of property tax revenues. I want, I want to speak a little bit here because this is something I didn't really go into the weeds on the report. I saw the scope and the, you know, the purpose of the audit was just basically reporting the numbers, which I pledged to do. But I think when I looked at these numbers, I was a little, little put back and I questioned a lot of things. And the reason I did so is, as I was just talking to the assessor, the commercial real estate assessed valuation number actually increased in 2023 from 2022, 15%. And, you know, the surtax cut was 10%. And it, the commercial real estate had actually gone up a couple percentage points in 20, from the 2022, just from new construction, things like that. So that's 17% over two years, and we only cut 10%. So that would tell me that it should have actually been higher. So I asked a lot of questions, specifically our Collector. And I think the bottom line, I don't make this conclusion in the report, but a lot of what we could dig into is that there is a protested amount. So there can be protested surtax payments. And that actually did increase from 2022 to 2023 by about $411,000. So that, you know, if you were to compare that, it would actually have been about the same as $19.7 million, you know, less, less the change in protest, if that makes sense. So that was one factor that played into this. We had talked a lot about the, the status of TIFs. Any TIF pre-1998 did not have to pay surtax under the law in Chapter 99. After 1998, it does. Other forms of tax abatements do, I'm sorry, do not pay the surtax, so Chapter 100s, 135s, 353s. So that can have an effect on these, these values. So those are some other things that came into play also from the 2022 to 2023 jump. You know, we didn't expect that $3 million, $3 million jump from $16.7 million to $19.7 million off of a non-reassessment year figure. So we attribute that mostly to a lot of TIF coming back on the rolls in 2023. But bottom line, overall, 2020 to 2024 surtax increased 6.2 million or 46.8%. And so you can just see the year-over-year change in surtax without the Hancock Amendment far exceeds anywhere close to 5%. And we basically had, you know, the one-year, one-year change. Moving on, we want to keep an issue and keep an eye on, you know, by cutting surtaxes, that increased the tax burden on other forms and classifications of property. It held, it went down from 3.9% to 3.4%, which is the same as the 2022 level. So that's something to, you know, be aware of. I also looked at the factor of essentially, what is the growth in total property tax compared to all surtax together? That's what that last column indicates. And essentially, what that says is if there were no surtax, there would still be a net growth in property tax. It's just something to kind of look at in context and perspective. I also then took the current numbers, and I did want to give a, you know, projection into the future. So what can we look at for the next 10 years? Just to give the commission, you know, some information on that, comparing the $1.44 rate to $1.59, and essentially, it would be 10% higher, right? So currently, we're $19.2 million. This is a little generous. It looks at the current assessed valuation trends. It's unlikely that we'll continue at that same rate, right? We're in a very high market at this point. But it could go all the way to as high as $33.4 million at the current surtax rate over the next 10 years or $15 million and 78%. But certainly, it would have been $3.6 million higher at close to 40 million. You know, altogether, however, though, when we look at that in the scope of total property tax, if we were to make those same projections, total property tax could go up to $930 million. But this is using the Hancock Amendment rates. So the growth in collections, not just assessed valuation, because again, other forms of property levies have to roll back. And the bottom line here is that, you know, that difference accounts for less than half percent of total property taxes is what would, would not be received and foregone. It's hard to see because it did not, it did, it's kind of disproportionate on that scale. But bottom line, I gave a rating, an assessment of this. I mean, if you think about it, we're talking about, you know, less than half a percent of total property taxes. So the question of did this move economic growth or change a lot of things in Clay County? Hard to say. Likely not. But at the same time, if you look at commercial real estate, you know, you can see that surtax is 20% to 25% of that assessed valuation. As, and similarly, for a commercial real estate taxpayer, it's about 20% to 25% of their bill. So 10% of that is roughly, you know, 2%. So I mean, still, is that, is that a big change? Likely not. It could be considered an equity question. You know, none of these taxpayers own the property that's being taxed. It no longer exists. It's been replaced since the 80s. But I will say, I actually still receive calls on occasion in the county auditor's office about questioning what the surtax is, even despite Proposition A, some taxpayers, you know, don't even understand what it is, and they're still frustrated paying it despite giving information about how this was reformed in recent years. And I'm sure the assessor receives those calls as well. So it's an interesting topic, but anyway, I know that isn't the most exciting thing. And I know this is what we had on the agenda tonight, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. Like I say, happy to look at other things. This is probably more in your economic opportunities, strategic plan areas. So there we go.
Thank you very much for that report. It was very informative, and it was, it was good to be able to take a look back when we go forward with the policy and put it before the people and the people approve it, whether it performed as, as we had hoped it would or not. I want to thank you certainly for the hard work you did in making sure that the numbers were, were correct as we were presenting them to the people. Obviously, of course, Tracy Baldwin was, you know, hugely impactful. I appreciate working with you guys on that. And I just want to point out, although he's not here this evening, Treasurer Bob Nance was certainly an integral member of this, of this team going forward. Something else I'd like to point out on this is, well, two things, actually. One is that what this actually did was it took us from being the highest taxing entity in our region, and it put us on a level playing field with Jackson County. One thing I found surprising and a little irksome, to tell you the truth, was that we were taxing our businesses at a higher rate than Jackson County was taxing theirs. I think that fairness would certainly indicate that a level playing field is in order. Also, that while I think this was a good, a good thing that we did, we had started out looking at a larger decrease. But basically, through conversations with the school districts, among others, and of course, Mr. Auditor, Mr. Collector, we, we were all in this together, I'm sorry, assessor. We were, you know, in those meetings together. And this was, this, we came up with this number in part from a collaboration of those conversations. And in fact, the superintendent at the time, I think, had mentioned that perhaps it'd be more fair if we were at a parity with the school district. And we essentially said, okay. So I mean, there is, you know, there is, I think, that willingness on our part to take into account what the opposition says and to, and to calculate it into what the proposal was that we put forward. So I think we came out by listening to those who, who were on the opposite side of the question and giving them a fair hearing, which I believe we did. I think we came out with a stronger, a stronger proposal to put before the people. So I want to thank everyone who's involved in that. And it is good to see the robust discussion within our, within our community because we need citizen involvement and we need their feedback. With that, excuse me, I didn't see who came in first. Commissioner Carpenter, I'll go with you. If you, oh, did Jake? All right, Commissioner Johnson, I'll go ahead and go to you first. Then I will go to, and I'm sorry, the screen is slightly different than it was, so I'm working through it. Commissioner Johnson, you are now on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Couple of questions. Do you know, as a result of this surtax, have you heard of any fire departments being shut down?
No, no, I haven't.
Have you heard of any firefighters being laid off as a result of this?
Nope, no, nope.
Have you heard of any reduction to law enforcement or EMS or libraries or parks or health and mental health services or road districts? Did the Clay, did the North Kansas City School District get cut $3.5 million, which is what Dan Clemens, the then superintendent of North Kansas City, said would happen? They would be cut $3.5 million from the budget. Did that happen? Do you know of?
It did not. And I mean, you know, if you look at the, not only surtax, but the, you know, total property taxes, you know, certainly increased over $50 million as well. But even on specifically that entity, you know, we can drill down to the impact by jurisdiction.
So before, before this even happened, and I was on the campaign trail, this is before I got elected, and I was in favor of this, and, and we predict this, some of us predict this, that, that a reduction in the tax doesn't mean a reduction in the amount of money that we'll get the following year. In other words, we got more money from this tax the following year. Is that correct?
Yeah, and compared to the, to the base year, it is, it is higher.
Right. And so it's kind of like a, you can have a smaller percentage. In other words, you can tax less, but on a larger amount of money and still make more money. For example, would you rather have 100% of my paycheck or my net worth or 1% of Elon Musk's net worth? I'd go with the 1%. It's a lot more money. And so that's exactly what happened here. Even though we reduced the surtax, we still had a greater income from that. And so what's frustrating to me is, and we knew that was going to happen. We predicted that. I went on record as saying, hey, you're going to be making more money than you did the year before, even with this reduction. And yet you had people come before this commission, before I was on this commission, saying, hey, we're going to lose 3.5 million. We're going to have to shutter, we're going to have to shut down fire departments. It's going to affect a lot, affect the libraries, it's going to affect the, all the things that I mentioned. Now, did it not affect them? They all got more money from this than they did the prior year before the cut. More money than the prior year. Now, what has happened is the rate of increase was decreased. No, they still got an increase, but it wasn't increased as high as it would have been without this reduction in surtax.
I'd equate it, absolutely, I would equate this to, I like to say, a one-time Hancock Amendment rollback. So if you think about it, that happens every year to every property tax levy. Has to roll back to only get yield of 5%. Surtax has never been rolled back. And so we basically made a one-time rollback, but yeah.
So the reason why I point this out, and we all know the political rhetoric that takes place, you know, with this kind of stuff, but a lot of it just was flat-out false, flat-out false. And whether it was an intentional mistruth or it was just ignorance, it was one of those two. Because to say, hey, we're going to have to shut down fire departments, wasn't true. And we knew that wasn't, that wasn't true. To say we're going to have to lay off teachers, we knew that wasn't going to happen. To say we're going to lose 3.5, or, yeah, 3.5 million from the school district's budget, we knew that wasn't going to, cut from the budget, less than, we knew that wasn't true. And so what happens is, is, is we play these games when it's just out of either, like I said, either ignorance or just a flat-out lie. And I want to apply the same, to the same thing to the, to the seniors, to the senior citizens, what's the, what are we calling it now?
Tax relief program.
Tax relief program. Where we won't be taking any less money because of that. Not be taking less money in because of that. We'll, we'll get just as much, if not more, actually, we will be getting more every year from property taxes, guaranteed. We'll make, this county will make everybody who's, who's getting money from property taxes, will make more the following year and the following year and the following year, and will not be reduced at all by that tax relief for the seniors. And so we got to be careful when, when we say things, or I think the voters evaluate things, is like there's, there's some people that are just putting misinformation out there that just isn't true. And like I say, at best... And like I say, at best, it's ignorance, at worst, it's malicious and, and just an intentional mistruth. And there was a lot of things that were put out when this was, was on the ballot that were just wrong, I'm just plain wrong. And, and a lot of people perpetuated that and continued to say those things. Even I saw a fire union put out, hey, yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to lay off people and shut down fire departments. No, you're not. No, you're not. We knew that wasn't going to happen, they knew that wasn't going to happen. It's just frustrating that happens, but now it's like, see, we told you so. And that's exactly what happened. We made more money, yet had a tax cut. And sometimes government has to learn to live within their, within their means, within their budget, and just because they got, didn't get more than the more money that they, you know, they, they still got more money. And, and it's just, so I just, I think I made my point. But thank you for that, and I really appreciate, I appreciate all the work you've done this before the, before this was passed. Thank you.
I appreciate that as well. I mean, I think I'll just make a comment too, I think, you know, kudos to Assessor Baldwin. It's, it's a really strange, I'll call it a loophole, or kind of outdated thing, in my opinion, in Missouri law. It's a very strange form of tax, so.
Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you were seeking recognition?
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, as somebody who did oppose Proposition A on the commission, and then again at the ballot, first of all, I appreciate your work on this, it's very helpful. I certainly didn't ever say that they were going to be shutting down fire departments or anything of the sort, so I hope the commentary about ignorance or malicious lying isn't directed my way, as somebody who opposed this. What I did say at the time was, I agreed it was a pretty small, pretty modest reduction in revenue, especially when it was reduced to just being a 10%, started off as a 50% cut, it was reduced down to a 10% cut. I explicitly thanked Presiding Commissioner Nolte for that compromise. The report that's before us today shows that over the next decade, it'll be a reduction in revenue of between 25 and 30 million dollars in total. Obviously, the big majority of that goes to our school districts, they're our biggest recipients of property tax dollars, including surtax dollars. So will the public schools here in Clay County receive 25 to 30 million dollars less over the next decade? Yeah, they will. Then they would have if Proposition A hadn't, hadn't have passed. That's what the auditor's report shows us today. So, you know, is that going to break the bank? No, it's not. We're not going to shut down any schools, we're not going to shut anything down. But those are revenues that, had we maintained status quo, would have come in, and would have gone to things like teacher salaries, like school building, capital improvement costs. The money would have come in and it would have been utilized for public schools. I mean, we just, you know, that's inarguable. So instead, it won't. I agree at 10%, that 25 to 30 million dollar figure isn't too overly big. If we had maintained it at 50%, obviously, it would have been about five times bigger, so you can do the math. Instead of 25 to 30 million, you might have been talking 125 to 150 million over the next decade. So I'm grateful that it ended up being a pretty modest, pretty small cut, and certainly agree that this cut alone doesn't put the ability to perform vital public services in jeopardy. What I would suggest is you always have to take things in sort of the total package, which is that, yes, revenues will continue to go up over time, but that also is pretty directly tied to our population growth and inflation over time. And so just like property tax revenues are going to have to continue to increase, to continue to pay for our public schools, et cetera, our county budget will continue to go up over time. Since I've been on the commission, it's gone up by tens of millions of dollars, not out of a desire to raise taxes or increase spending. I don't think that the three of us sought to do that, or the seven of us have sought to do that, since it's increased since we've been here. It's simply a product of the passage of time, a growing county, and inflation means those dollars need to go up over time. And so I think it is important to understand that increasing revenue is going to be a necessary function of a growing county. Doesn't mean we have to raise the base tax rates. I don't support raising the base tax rates, and since I've been on the commission, have not proposed any increase in the tax rates. However, if we are simply calculating how many taxpayers we have, and what the values of their homes are, sure, that's going to go up over time. And will hopefully prove to be sufficient resources to maintain our roads and bridges we talk about so much here in the county, to maintain public safety through the sheriff's office, to make, maintain state-of-the-art public schools like we have here in Clay County. So, you know, my position all along has been that we're a growing county, we're doing great, we've got great schools, great, great public safety, we have some needs like infrastructure where we don't have enough resources. And so my position all along was, let's just maintain status quo in terms of tax levels. And on this issue, as I've said, pretty modest reduction, don't think it's going to have too big of an impact. Do I think the districts, the school districts will be able to, you know, figure out how to compensate for that reduction of, of 20 to 30 million over the next decade? Yes, I think they certainly will figure it out. And, so yeah, I mean, those are my thoughts on it. You know, I, I think we ought to be cautious about simply acknowledging that revenues are up overall, we should instead understand the total package, which is that expenses will continue to go up over time as well, and be cautious with what we do with, with tax rates. One question I have, and again, I appreciate the report, very helpful in sort of gaming out sort of the future in terms of the revenue impacts. The, the sort of overall rating at the end, normally, an audit rating would be, an audit rating of a, of the soundness, well, you tell me, what would a, what would a, a rating at the end of an audit normally tend to represent? You've got it as four out of five stars on, on this one?
You know, it's kind of in the auditor's discretion in the world of internal auditing, and so, I mean, yeah, you know, we can see, in looking at the state auditor, for example, you'll give a, kind of a word to it, right? You can say, poor, fair, good, excellent. I, I used a star rating system, it was something that I thought made more sense to me. And so, you know, I assigned, you know, essentially, a four star, a four stars, because I, I looked at as far as, you know, weighing kind of the necessary criteria, in this case, from all things considered, of, you know, what is the impact to those local governments as far as their, their budgeting? So that could degrade from this being a, a great surtax cut, because to your point, there is foregone revenue growth in time. But at the same time, again, I kind of look at this just from the fairness and equity standpoint of, you know, truly, it's not, it's taxing something, property that doesn't exist, and, you know, it's, it's very strange to me, it just very, you know, sticks out. And then, you know, the fact that it's exempt from the Hancock Amendment provision. So I, I see those as kind of good qualities, so that's what increased my ratings, so to speak. You know, an easier solution, I think, that we should look at long-term, is why can't this roll back annually? I mean, if you cap the growth at that, I think that would, you know, resolve a lot of issues, because it does grow disproportionately for these, these taxpayers, and, and no one knows what it, what it is for. So, and that's, that's why we got the complaints, that's why this came to bear, and that's how it ended up on the ballot.
Yeah, no, I got you. So, but, so the stars here aren't meant to indicate an accounting rating? It, it's meant rather to conclude that it was a good thing that it passed, or?
So this is a, this is a performance audit and technically a review, so we're not looking at a financial accounting, so to speak. That would be more of, you know, if I were to audit an entity and their books and look at, you know, the soundness of that reporting, so that's not what type of audit this is. So it's more about the, the performance of surtax itself as it relates to the criteria that's been expressed. So it's more about, you know, operating efficiencies and things of that nature.
Good, thank you.
Before I recognize Commissioner Lawson, I just want to acknowledge that the points made by Commissioner Johnson were accurate, that there were intemperate things said, certainly, but I think it also is, I think we can all agree, that the opposition argument made by Commissioner Carpenter was one that was reasoned and measured and logically put forward. So while intemperate voices were raised, I think that we can take some pride in the discussion that we had in this body, that it was not, not a discussion among ourselves, that was one that was rancorous, but was, I think, constructive and well-meant on all sides. So with that, Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized.
Thank you. I hope that the good Lord above lets me live for another 10 years, because I'm going to be the person screaming out, "I told you so." This isn't going to impact a damn thing. But I will say this, there was so much said when you were trying to get that passed, Jerry, and I, I have to say Victor was brilliant, and, and he, his, his figures were pretty close to right on the money. I, I think that the growth in this county, my gosh, we're talking about another huge subdivision out there that's going to be county, it is going to be in a city, but it's still county, out, out off of, near Smithville. We've got that one, we've got that huge development that you can see as, as you're going south on I-35. It's not only going to be a bunch of homes, it's going to be businesses and everything that are going to go in there. We have, when, when all this was going on, I couldn't believe the amount of money that had to have been spent to fight it, with all kinds of flyers out there saying, oh, you know, this is devastating, we're going to have to lay every teacher off we've got practically, you know, they were, it was such a big thing. After it was all over and said and done with, not very long ago, ran into the gentleman who was superintendent of the schools, and my husband said to him, how's everything going, you know, now that they, they went ahead and instituted that? And he said, eh, it's no big deal, we're doing just great. So, so for all of the hoo-ha that we had to go through, it was a shame, like Jay says, you know? That wasn't necessary. If you sit back and you look at the taxes that are paid, the small amount of businesses that this was going to have a very positive impact on, or SB 190, the small amount of elderly that are going to benefit from this, be able to hang on to their homes, you know, that they've worked all their lives to have, that they can pass on to their kids. It, it's not going to be earth-shaking. I think we're going to see the continued growth in this county, because it's, we offer services, we offer safety, it's a great place to live, people know that, and they're coming in droves. So I, I think we're going to be just fine, we're not going to have to lay off officers, we're not going to have to get rid of fire stations, you know, we're not going to see teachers suffer, we're not going to see any kind of library be shut down because of it, although there's times I think some of them should be shut down. But nevertheless, I, I do firmly believe that the things we've done have benefited small business, have benefited seniors, and, and, you know, we haven't come to a point yet where seniors don't have to pay taxes for schools anymore. That might be the next step. Then I could see them saying, this is going to be impactful. But right now, what we've done, we've done with great care, we've done with great analysis, and we made a sound, far as I'm concerned, for what that's worth, we've made a sound business decision in what we did. Now, like I say, 10 years from now, we'll see. And, and I'll be the first to say, I told you, or I'll be the first one to say, I was wrong, but I don't think so. So thank you so much for what you do, you do a masterful job, and I appreciate it. And I can even, my limited CPA knowledge, I can understand it, so I appreciate that very much.
Commissioner Wagner? Hold on a moment, let me get back to it, I pushed the button and it doesn't seem to want to.
There it is.
There you go, now you.
No, no, there, there it is.
There I go, there I go. I'm going to leave it alone now, you're good.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see. All right, well, first of all, thank you, Victor, for the presentation this afternoon. I will try not to be repetitive, but I will say, because I think I've got an over-under with Commissioner Lawson, that we're done by seven, so I want to keep to that, so. My take on this has always been one of, yes, those who were against it probably made more noise than they needed to, but nevertheless, there was a point to what they said. And I guess, as we look at what, what you've presented here today, I would ask and invite, as we talk about property taxes in the future, recognizing that we have one of the lowest parts of that property tax, that it would seem to me that as we want to talk on behalf of other jurisdictions, that we actually understand the haircut that we give to those jurisdictions. I, I think that's important, and although I, you know, was, was the sky going to fall? No, but nevertheless, the base has changed, and the base will have some effect over down the road, as my colleague said, and so I won't get into that anymore. However, there is one part of this performance audit that I believe is missing. And that is, if part the justification for bringing this forward to the voters was, among other things, suggesting that our surtax was greater than what Jackson County had, then by virtue of that, that would suggest that somehow we are losing business to Jackson County because of a tax reason. And as I look through here, and as I remember some of the rhetoric that was used during that election, among other things, the suggestion was that actually, a 10% change in the surtax was fairly insignificant to commercial property owners, and I, if my memory serves, I heard anywhere from maybe, the average, based on the number of parcels, was maybe five bucks, 10 bucks, something like that. And it always struck me, and you can tell me if I'm correct in that, or the assessor can, but it always struck me that for this to then be something that essentially incentivized business, then one of two things would have to happen. Either you would have to have a growth of business licenses and/or commercial development here in Clay County because of it, or you would have to see some sort of rent or some other kind of tenant relief, because if we are providing relief to a commercial property owner, then by virtue of that, that relief should then be extended all the way through. And I'm not convinced that either of those things happened, and I'm not convinced, based on the presentation today, that either of those things have happened. And I don't want to put pressure that you, well, you should have, or that that was the expectation in the beginning, but it, but I, I do want to at least carve out those two points, because to me, those would be points that would say to me that for all of the, all of the grousing and all of the, you know, pushback and all of that, to at least be able to say, well, yes, but because we've provided this relief, this has now created this result and this result. Can you help me find that, or can you help just kind of work through that with me?
Sure, no, I really appreciate, you know, the question. I think, you know, a number of things. I think, you know, back to the rhetoric question, that was something going into this audit, that wasn't something I was really looking to evaluate.
Sure.
And that's something I'm happy to, you know, look at, you know, further, and kind of, you know, analyze. I think all economic indicators would indicate things have increased since, since the surtax cut. You know, what is, you know, as a direct result of the surtax cut, might not be something that we can, you know, truly, with enough certainty, you know, make that, you know, declaration or make that conclusion, however. But a commercial real estate increase, like I said, you know, 15% on the knowledge of, of that increase, you know, I think by and large, more, you know, we, we certainly know that a lot of economic development would happen by complete tax abatement, right? And, and it can be from other sources, it could be from the state of Missouri, providing a, a tax credit on, on income tax, right, rather than, because of what a county did with its. than because of what a county did with its, you know, Surtax, property tax rate. But what I will say is that, you know, my understanding of the dialogue going into the rationale for Surtax was not so much, "We need to do this to improve the economy in Clay County." It was more kind of what Commissioner Nolte said about, "We have a disparity of being the third highest Surtax rate in the state of Missouri. Our neighbor is $1.44. Let's go to $1.44." We're still tied for third highest. So, I think that was kind of the main plank or reason for doing so and that, kind of the analysis I said about just the inherent unfairness of Surtax.
Well, one can argue, one can argue the fairness of any tax, correct? But I guess what I would leave with is just simply, it has been my experience that the biggest driver of commercial development has always been rooftops. And as has been pointed out, to the extent that rooftops keep getting built, commercial development will come with it, whether or not the Surtax is at $1.44 or $1.59, whether or not Jackson County is greater or less than our Surtax here. And so, I guess my desire and just as we have future tax discussions, knowing that we've talked about the structural integrity of our budget over time, that as we talk about whether it's related to this subject or any other subject in the future related to taxes, I just want to be sure that if we're going to make the argument of fairness and bringing more development, that it truly does and can, and we have the belief that it will. I mean, fairness is a big part of it and I understand that, but I also want to be very cognizant of, if we want to incentivize development, let's say so, but if we're going to incentivize development, then let's make sure that we do or that whatever our plan is in doing so is actually one that we can track and know that it works. And I'll leave it at that. But again, thank you. Excellent information and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Something I'd like to point out that I neglected to prior with my remarks was that during that same period, this body was also lowering the property taxes for all citizens below the Hancock requirements back when we were setting the levy. Also, that in the midst of this happening, the Library Board also, in addition to that, lowered their property tax levy. So, I think what we're looking at here is a cumulative kind of effect as far as that goes. It also, it kind of underscores Commissioner Johnson's point that the library system, at least through the express will of their board, had made, had come to the conclusion that not only would they be able to tolerate that particular cut, but that they could decrease their tax yet further. But I think one of the, and I'll say it again, one of the things that I think that reflects well upon this county and this body is that we are having measured and logical discussions about this subject and we are not just knee-jerk cutting or raising taxes, but we are trying to take what the effects are into account and that I think that as a body, we are acting in a reasonable way. And I want to express my gratitude to all the members of this commission because wherever we fall on this or any other subject, the level of civility and the level of, the higher level of discourse is markedly above what it was in some years ago. So, want to just end it by saying, thank you again, Mr. Auditor. Thank you again, Mr. Baldwin, for all the work that you guys did. And of course, Bob Nance, who is our treasurer and not here at the moment, he certainly was an integral part of this. Before we end the discussion, or I should say, the report and the discussion that ensued, would anyone else like to make comments before we end this part of our agenda? Seeing none. That concludes the reports. That brings us to County Administrator comments. Administrator?
Thank you. Just a couple of announcements. Next week on the 24th, there will be a ribbon cutting for the opening of the Old Beebe Bridge at 10:30, so we hope everyone can join us for that. The commission's next meeting is next Thursday, April 25th at 6:00 PM here in the chambers. And then if the commission will indulge me, certainly Mother Nature has really sort of, not really liked us this week. And so, what I'd like to do is invite Interim Park Director John Davis up to give the commission an update on the activities that have been happening out at the Smithville Lake area as a result of the storms that we've seen the last couple of days.
Interim Park Director John Davis. It's been a rough week, to say the least. Give you a starting update or just general of where the tornado from Tuesday started and then I'll go into this morning's damage. Shelter five at Crows Creek Picnic Arm is where we've initially started to see damage. Few shingles off of that shelter house and one hedge tree is completely twisted and that tree will be taken down sometime. Continued into F-loop of Crows Creek Campground, had a patron's camper trailer, picnic table was thrown into that camper. They're taking care of that themselves. Still numerous tree branches around the area. Cabin Fever Trail, which is off of C-loop in Crows Creek Campground, sustained several trees down. That has been cleared and is back open. Tornado then jumped the lake into D-loop of Camp Branch Campground. That's where it initially first flipped the Kemp family's camper trailer. I'm sure you've seen that on the news. They have got all their property out of that trailer and park staff yesterday helped flip that trailer and get it back on its wheels and they're making arrangements soon to get it out of the campground. During that time, we had two park staff that were just in the restroom and in that loop and saw the tornado coming. They were able to get into shelter in one of the new CXT buildings. They were glad it was there. Branches and tree limbs, shingles from some of the roofs of the shower houses and restrooms have all been cleaned up in Camp Branch Campground as of right now. Most of the buildings that received minor shingle damage are scheduled to have metal roofs put on them and are budgeted for that this year. So, we're going to patch them and move on and they'll be fine. Let's see. The next building that was hit was our brand-new Camp Branch Maintenance Building. The north side of that building, the roof was removed from it. Staff early yesterday, that morning, had been, just finished putting the insulation inside on the roof and were quite shocked that we were just there and now it's gone. Continued, that building has been, was, I'll get to that one of this morning's events, but that building was secured and was tarped off and hopefully prevent rain. Went into now the KC TA, Kansas City Trap Shooters Association's clubhouse. That building was hit. It is probably catastrophic loss. And that building has been secured where we have assisted KC TA, we're getting all, some of their major contents secured and out of that building. Debris field north of, from there extends north of KC TA into the shooting range. Will work on cleaning that up in days to come, but it's not a trafficked area. And then that debris field ended at the old staff house on Collins Road. It sustained some minor shingle damage and gutter damage and we'll get that fixed as soon as we can. Camp Branch Marina was spared. It only had three anchor cables that were broken. We'll get those fixed in coming days, but it is secure and no issues as of right now. All campers that were had, we have closed the campground until Tuesday. If we may, hopefully we can get it back open Tuesday. I don't see why not as of right now. But anybody that had camping reservations over this weekend, they were either refunded or they were transferred over to Crows Creek Campground. Then this morning's damage. Hit the western side of the park on Paradise Point, Little Platte Park. Paradise Point Marina, we've lost eight cables, anchor cables. The ramp, the docks shifted, knocked the ramp off the platform. All the walkways are now zigzagged instead of straightened. Park staff have worked all day to get that straightened out. We're not quite done. We've had to go in, we've replaced seven of the cables so far and two of the landlines that are holding the dock. By tomorrow, we should have the ramp back open, the ramp back up and dock should be open. But it is closed for the night because we can't, you can't get to it because the ramp's in the water. Lost several trees in the Little Platte Park area, two big ones on the golf course, one of which held Eagle's Nest, one of our year-round pears that stayed in the park. The Dog Park lost one big tree. Did not damage any of the fence on the Dog Park, so that was one plus. Trails, Smokin' Davy Trail, numerous trees down that has been cleared up. Bone Bender Trail, numerous trees down there and they were all cleaned up today. Little Platte North Trail, there's a lot of trees down and most of them are fairly large-sized, so Trails Crew will begin working on that tomorrow. So, that trail is closed. Sailboat Cove docks. They are closed. They were shifted and we have one sailboat that's kind of pinched in between the slips and possibility we will get that tomorrow. If not, it'll be the first of the week. Crews just now have ended for the day. They were, they have been working over, little, the Paradise Point Marina still into the night. We did have one damaged tree in Camp Branch Campground this morning. It was a cedar tree that we were going to take out because it was still partially damaged from tornado and it did actually give us one favor. It took one hanging branch that we couldn't get down and so we got that. And then the maintenance building, the tarp that we put over the roof, it blew off this Insurance adjusters are going to, supposed to be out this weekend or first of the week to look at KC TA building and the Camp Branch Maintenance Building. Do I have any questions? Any questions?
I just hope it's a sunny day tomorrow.
I hope. We would, made a lot more progress on the docks today, but it was raining and the wind was still up and it was fighting them too bad, so.
Yeah, I certainly want to appreciate and I think the commission would agree that we certainly appreciate the hard work and the speed with which you and your staff have been able to work on this issue in spite of uncooperative weather. Still, you've made good progress and we certainly appreciate that our employees and what they do to help recover from a natural incident like this. So, is there anyone else who had any comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much. And I ran by the trap range after I saw the building destroyed. I saw the building destroyed and John was there. We had our police off, our deputies were there and, you know, making sure everything was okay. And I certainly appreciated all your assistance and information that you gave me. Thank you so much for all you do up there.
Thank you. And I'd like to say thank you to the Sheriff's Office, Emergency Management, Smithville Fire Department, Northland Regional Ambulance District, Highway, County Highway Department, County Facilities Department, Corps of Engineers and Risk Management, all responded and were great assistants the last couple of days. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Administrator, does that conclude your remarks?
Yes, it does. I would also like to give my kudos to John and his team and all of the individuals that were out there. And, you know, John didn't really say it, but, you know, when the storm hit on Tuesday, he was there at the park office and we had actually fishermen on the docks. And so, staff immediately went to, you know, inform them and to get those individuals into the shelter. One seemed to be a little bit more concerned about his, getting his fishing rod as opposed to heading to shelter and, but he, you know, he was able, and John was able to get them. And so, we appreciate our staff not only taking care of themselves, but also taking care of the patrons within the park to make sure they were safe and then helping with the aftermath. And it's going to take us a while to clean up some of these items, but I think staff's done a great job. I appreciate what they've done.
Thank you very much once again. That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Johnson, do you have anything you'd like to say? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner, I'll just go to Commissioner Withington, Commissioner Lawson, Commissioner... Okay, so the burden falls totally on to me to extend our meeting and I won't, I won't take too long. One of the things that has come to my attention and it causes concern, the mayor of Kansas City has recently, it would seem, through various media organs, extended an invitation to some of the migrants in New York City, that they would be welcomed here in Kansas City. Now, I understand the, I understand that we are a welcoming part of the country and I certainly appreciate the expression of that noble sentiment among our people. However, there are a number of concerns that raises, not the least of which is Missouri law has something to say on the issue of undocumented immigrants, both in the sanctuary cities, transporting undocumented aliens and a number of other issues that I think pose some very serious concerns. Not to mention the fact that more people, we already have an issue with housing in this community. I think this cannot help but make it somewhat, somewhat more of a concern. And finally, I mean, one cannot be thinking about New York and their migrant problem without reliving in their minds the pretty disturbing video from January where a number were kicking and punching two police officers who were trying to do their duty and enforce the law. The, I think it would be well that it be remembered that policies that are enacted by the city of Kansas City do not have effect just within the boundaries of the city of Kansas City, but it affects all of the surrounding communities. And that that will be impacted and it would be nice if there was some broader way that we could come to some way of having input because it is not going to be just the city of Kansas City. I've been in conversation with my counterpart in Platte County to get the view of what Platte County's thoughts are on this and I think we're going to have to make some kind of a statement to that effect and we will see what that does for us. But yes, I am concerned that the sanctuary city legislation, which is in place in Missouri law since 2009, needs to be kept in mind when these, when these issues are being broached. The penalty for some of these is loss of funding from the state, that they would be ineligible for state funding. And I think that is and was intended to be a rather serious, a rather serious hammer. With that, we will go ahead. That concludes Commissioner comments. We are adjourned. Thank you.